A call to order, the August 24th, 2023 Metro Planning Commission. And I have the privilege to start us off with welcoming our new Commissioner, Ms. Lewis. She's a native Nashvillian, an attorney and owner of Sugar Hill Bakery and Cafe. You'll have some Sugar High, not Sugar Hill. I was going to say you and Lisa can have a bake-off. She also has experience in real estate and development as well. So, welcome. We're thrilled to have you.
Pleasure.
And since I haven't been here for a little while, welcome to our other new Commissioners. It's great to see some new faces here today and sad that we're losing some others. One other point to make is that we are canceling the next Commission meeting on September 14th due to the upcoming special election or the runoff election. So, the next meeting will be September 28th and we will be back at our normal location at that time. So, with that, I will move to Item B, which is the adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item that we have is a special guest with us this afternoon, Mayor Cooper. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us and your leadership for us in the last few years.
Well, thank you. It's a treat to be here. Different location here, I guess, with early voting about to happen. And thank you for letting me talk to you all again. Looking around the board, Chair Farr, I think you're the only member that I did not appoint. So, I'm particularly fond of all of you. But I also, I know how hard this is and the great amount of work that this takes. But I wanted to come and spend a little bit of time on five areas. I won't go into each one of them with the detail that it probably deserves, but to have you be focused in the years ahead on five areas of dramatic change for the Planning Commission, I think itself. So, the first, I was just sitting with Angie, of course, is having an Department of Housing. And then the census function of beginning to count housing units because it is true, what you measure, you can improve. What you measure, you can make a change to that. But to go from two in staff to eight, to triple the Barnes Fund, the pilot program to incentivize the development of affordable housing. Now, just the other night, the $20 million Catalyst Fund for preserving affordable housing. And then with Angie's help, stewarding this 5,000 affordable units in the pipeline this fiscal year and try to make that true for every fiscal year. But the counting, the census, the keeping track of it, this is the place that I hope you'll stay focused on. I'm told that last year, there were 14,854 housing permits issued last year. That is up 45% from three years before. So, we are not in a city that is unable to build housing. In fact, just the reverse. We are able to build housing, but let's count it, let's keep track of it, let's make sure how much of it is affordable. And then as you make decisions about density for the future of Nashville, you've got the data to make informed choices and to encourage the private sector to do its share of continuing this amazing housing pipeline that is happening. Now, the next thing, each of you, I'm sure, is deeply aware, is codes online. What a change. It took three full years to get where we are today, but the modern enterprise-wide system of community asset and land use, the CAL Program, where everybody can go online and know where their permit is, who is, where it is in the process, pay all the fees online that anybody with an iPad or a laptop can open it up and be right there. Now, I think it's going to take a couple more months before every single department is online, but this is a transformative change, particularly for our development community, to speed up the permitting process so that, again, units, appropriate units can be built more quickly with less cost and Nashville can join the modern era. This is an environment where there's going to be, this year, we feel, just under $6 billion in construction permits in Nashville. Now, 10 years ago, that was maybe a billion and a quarter, maybe a billion and a half. Last year was 5.5 billion. This year is $6 billion. This is a large industry and handling the information needs with this modern system, which, again, you will, as much as any group, are the beneficiaries, but also the supervisors of it because I think anybody in planning can feel the heat from delay in permits, what's gone wrong, how is codes? Let's look after the whole situation. But that's exciting. And again, some of it is already up, but in the next two months, it's been a three-year effort, which has concluded, not widely observed in the public. Now, the next thing, which I personally think may be the most important thing to happen, maybe in my term as Mayor, is passed the other night in its Beal 2023-2010. And sometimes that's known as the Traffic Bill of Rights. But this is beginning to integrate. Now, we never had a Department of Transportation before or a traffic planner. Now, we have a Department of Transportation and a very professional traffic planner. So, now on to the next step of being a professional city, which is to require transportation studies to be done in advance of density discussions, to have the right scope of the transportation study, to understand the service levels, to not allow mythical improvements to be counted in a transportation study so that when you will have a density decision in front of you, the mitigations are known and you even have the bonding available by the developer if, in fact, the development is going to add to a diminishment of service levels. So, this creates a path. It includes multimodal analysis for the first time in the transportation study, is the linking of planning and NDOT in a very professional way. But really, it's just giving you the information that I think that you all feel that you would need anytime that you're coming to a decision. So, that is, that's just super exciting. And I'm grateful to NDOT and their growth as a professional organization to complement your growth as a professional organization. And dealing with this problem in a growing city has our infrastructure kept up. And if not, why not? And what do we need to do to keep it up? So, this creates the path to doing this. Now, the third thing that I'm super excited to talk to you about is a new division here in planning for repurposing metro assets. Now, this was passed in the last budget, the addition of staff positions and then a little bit of the mission. Because heretofore, and I see former Councilman Clifton here, metro head assets, the school might be discommissioned. What are you doing with it? How are you providing for the repurposing of a community asset back to the community? Now, you know if it's going to be a fire station, you can get GSA to build a fire station pretty well. Or if it's an MDHA property, then MDHA has had a particular role. But this is the group that specializes in community outreach and engagement. And the repurposing of metro assets has to be in partnership with the community, both vision and community going forward. So, in this department, there's funding for three additional positions and contract money to begin, one at a time, maybe two or three at a time, to begin to repurpose metro assets for the benefit of the community. Now, I'm going to leave here and go out to the Global Mall where probably the most exciting repurposing of a metro asset is happening, in partnership with the community, a plan that I think is going to be transformative for that part of Southeast Nashville. But there are other properties too, each needing love, care, and attention. And why having a separate division here in planning, I think, is the key to our future. There's ADA Heritage, which is already in the community planning process, but Old Brick Church Middle School, that's an incredible site. Old Bellevue Library and Fire Station, that's another incredible site. It'll be an enormous benefit to the community. The Cone School, always a challenge. It's so iconic in how it looks, so beneficial to the community. What are we doing with it on a long-term basis? Stokes Middle, Hillwood High School, that's an incredible piece of property. Each of these properties deserves a great destiny and partnership with the neighborhood to make it a neighborhood asset. How do we even do that? The city has, again, not really had a process for repurposing metro assets, but now, frankly, you all are going to be in charge of that and we need you to do a good job. Now, and then finally, I want to thank you all, I know Lucy is not here, but on the East Bank Vision. Because you're talking about in the East Bank, a larger prototype for what we are talking about in these individual neighborhood assets. So, the deliverables from the East Bank Plan going forward is so great. Yes, there's a stadium that we're happy to finance in a way that gets it off the back of metro taxpayers, but that's not the most important thing. The most important thing is going to be the new boulevard, the Bus Rapid Transit Line with dedicated lanes, a platform where 21,000 drivers can no longer have, of our drivers, Nashvillians don't have to get on the interstate to get around Nashville anymore, with a new route out to the airport. The platform for affordable housing is going to be great either from the money with us as the landlord or directly, including affordable housing in every mixed-use building that exists on the East Bank. And ultimately, to have the billion dollars of land back for city purposes that had been trapped in parking lot leases and would be for the next 17 years. So, you see, the repurposing of that asset back to Nashville is of incredible importance. So, with these five things, each one, I think, is significant to your work in the years ahead. I'm grateful for your administration of these five initiatives that are of incredible importance to Nashville. And thank you for all of your work. I want to especially thank my former colleague Brett Withers for being an invaluable member of this group and on the council itself. It is, he's been a unique asset to Nashville in all of this hard work. And then finally, if I can, as a former real estate person coaching, in the years ahead, be careful of setbacks, side, front, and top. Be careful of setbacks. In the years ahead, in some meeting late at night, just if you would, just remember that the mayor sat there and said, be careful about setbacks. It's long-lasting, their use and their need. And once you start ignoring or violating setbacks, you create a development pattern that I think is kind of, often can be unfortunate and diminishing the generational achievement that has been accomplished often in neighborhoods by respecting those setbacks. Doesn't mean you always have to do it, but just be careful about setbacks. And then I'm happy to spend time with all of you on these five initiatives going forward, but each one of them transforms, you are already pretty powerful, makes you a very powerful agency in local government. And each of them, I think, deserve to be here, but it does add to your job as the Board of Directors of Planning, so to speak, to make sure that each of these areas are, end up being as productive as I think they can be for the city going ahead. And so, with that, thank you, Chair, for letting me bring to everybody's attention. And to thank you for the East Bank. But the Traffic Bill of Rights is going to be incredible for how we link transportation and planning decisions. Housing decisions need to be part of almost every density decision going forward. The ability to repurpose metro assets is going to be everything for so many neighborhoods because we do have sort of a dozen assets that can mean everything to more than a dozen neighborhoods going forward. Each of these things, I'm grateful in advance for your stewardship. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Cooper. Well, I guess we have our marching orders now for... So, before we move on, while we're still sort of in our housekeeping, I also have the honor of recognizing one of our Commissioners who will be leaving us, for whom this is his last meeting. And so, with that, I do have a little presentation for Commissioner Withers, former, are you no longer Councilman Withers?
Through Thursday.
Through Thursday? Okay. Okay. Well, you will be missed as a District 6 constituent as well. You will be missed in East Nashville. I'm sure you aren't going anywhere. I'm sure you'll still be fighting for East Nashville. But thank you for your service to the city for eight years and certainly you've added a tremendous amount on your service to the Commission in the last two years. So, thank you. So, I guess we go back to our sort of normal order of business now, after a lot of excitement for the new Commissioners. We don't normally have quite so many special speakers at the beginning. But we will move forward to the approval of the July 27th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. I think we were emailed those last week. Has everyone had a chance to review? Any comments, questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
For acceptance.
Okay. Again, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item is our recognition of council members. And Council Lady Benedict, you'll wait? Okay. So, with that, I think we're on to Item E, which is the Items for Deferral or Withdrawal. So, oh, it's not you, Lisa. Okay. 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 Sorry. Item E, Items for Deferral or Withdrawal. Item number one, 2023 CP 014002, Donaldson Heritage, Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to the September 28th Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, on page three of your agenda, item number two, 2023 SP 005001 Riverside at Metro Center SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 28th meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2023 SP 054001 Charlotte Pike Mixed Use, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number four, 2023 SP 059001 475 Humphrey Street, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. Item number five, 2023 SP 069001 3800 Old Hickory Boulevard, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. On page five of your agenda, item number 10, 2007 SP 146001 1420 Old Hickory Boulevard Amendment, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. Item number 11, 2023 SP 048001 The Grove at Buena Vista, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2023 SP 073001 909 and 917 Cheetham Place, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. Item number 13, 2023 S 121001 Clarksville Pike, staff recommendation is defer to September 28th. And that concludes our deferral agenda. Thank you. So, to recap, the items for deferral or withdrawal are items number one, two, three, four, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Also, item number five. Oh, sorry. An item five. Okay, Commissioners, and I forgot to say this, but just as a reminder that when we're using our mics, we actually have to push the button ourselves to turn them on and off. But on that, do we have a motion for approving the items for deferral or withdrawal? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Okay. Items on the Consent Agenda. So, I'm going to read through the items on the tentative consent agenda and ask if anyone is here in opposition. If so, please raise your hand. And if there is someone in opposition, the items will be presented. If no one is in opposition to the item, it will be placed on the consent agenda. And when you raise your hand, if you could keep it up for a minute so we can just note that item before taking it off of the agenda, that would be very helpful. Starting on page four, item number six, 2022 S 200001 Plan of Hamilton Place. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number seven, 2023 S 115001 D.C. Kelly Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number eight, 2023 Z 084 PR 001, it's a request to rezone on Mary Street. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number nine, 2023 CP 007002, the West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be heard. Moving on to page six of the agenda, item number 14, 2022 M 003 SR 001, that's a renaming of a portion of Dewest Avenue. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number 15, 2023 Z 074 PR 001, that's a rezoning along Georgia Avenue. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 16, 2023 Z 087 PR 001, it's a rezoning along Joe Johnston Avenue and 19th Avenue. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. So, now I will read through the consent agenda with the full caption. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Okay. So, our items on the consent agenda tonight, starting on page four of the agenda, item number six, 2022 S 20001 Plan of Hamilton Place, that's a request for a final plat to create 10 lots along Hamilton Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page five of your agenda, item number seven, 2023 S 115001 D.C. Kelly Subdivision, it's a request for a final plat to create three lots along Franklin Pike Circle. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exceptions to Section 3-5.2.1 for lot frontage and 3-5.2.2 for lot area. Item number eight, 2023 Z 084 PR 001, that's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property at 2406 Mary Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2022 M 003 SR 001, that's the renaming of a portion of Dewest Avenue to Montague Way. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 15, 2023 Z 074 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property at 2810 Georgia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 16, 2023 Z 087 PR 001, a request to rezone from CS to MUNANS for properties along Joe Johnston Avenue and from RS 6 to MUNANS and RS 5A for property located along 19th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under item H, Other Business, item number 17, Employment Contract Amendment for Jared Isless and Kyle Lampert. Item number 18, Employment Contract Renewal for Olivia Rancine. And item 22, to accept the Director's Report. And that concludes our consent agenda. Great. Thank you. I will read these back just for everyone in the audience. The items on the consent agenda this afternoon are items number six, seven, eight, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 22. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, Commissioners, you've heard the items for the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So, that leaves us, I think, with one item, item number nine that we'll be hearing tonight. So, we'll give everyone a moment to resettle, although I guess everyone's here for item nine.
Right. Oh. Sorry, getting used to the technology here. All right. I'm Olivia Rancine with Community Plans and I'll be presenting item number nine, which is a request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan. So, I just wanted to note this before we begin, as this item does not have an associated rezonings, as not all plan amendments are paired with development proposals. Policy amendments and changes can occur on their own. Policy changes allow an opportunity to shape the future, while those linked to rezonings tend to be reactive. This is a more proactive approach. All right. Here's the request, amend the West Nashville Community Plan and include a supplemental policy. All right. Staff recommend's approval of the policy application and the supplemental policy to limit building height to four stories within Study Area 1, which is that larger purple So, here's some background. The current policies were applied in 2011, prior to Nashville Next Passage in 2015. When these policies were assigned in 2011, there were only a few small parcels that included mixed-use policy designation, despite the neighborhood already containing a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential use. Since 2011, there have been two mixed-use policy amendments, one that supports a townhome development and the other for the Breeze Block Project. All right. Both were development-driven. During her tenure, Councilmember Roberts observed these changes and in the fall of 2022, requested that the Community Plans team study and propose a more cohesive strategy for mixed-use walkable development along this important neighborhood street. So, using current land use and zoning as a guide, planning staff collaborated with the council member to provide an initial study area and then further refined the area based on several rounds of public feedback. Modifications were made after each presentation and those states are listed on the screen. So, this was the initial study area. It's largely comprised of T4 neighborhood-evolving and T4 neighborhood maintenance policies, which are residential-only policies. Staff recommended originally urban mixed-use corridor for the entirety of Robertson Avenue with mixed-use neighborhood policy for the Duluth and Vernon area. So, following the initial meeting in November of 2022, where staff attended the neighborhood meeting, staff provided several revisions of this policy and used public input to guide revisions. Staff presented at three neighborhood meetings and one meeting of the Robertson Development Committee. During these meetings, some members of the public expressed concern for increased height and density allowed under policy impacts on traffic, concern for apartments, short-term rentals, and large mixed-use projects. Others readily expressed support for more walkable amenities and to allow the community to evolve. Community members also voiced and expressed support for a more condensed mixed-use policy area and park activation via mixed-use development. Community ideas and concerns guided the policy revision process. As you can see here, staff switched the recommended policy from T4 urban mixed-use corridor As you can see here, staff switched the recommended policy from T. 4 urban mixed-use corridor to T. 4 urban mixed-use neighborhood and T. 4 neighborhood center in order to address density and height concerns. Staff also condensed the study area by thirty acres and focused on capturing existing commercial and industrial uses as well as surrounding properties. Staff extended policy to Charlotte Park to foster park activation, and staff have also added a supplemental policy that caps height at four stories for the Study Area One in order to address public concerns. This application of T. 4 mixed-use neighborhood allows for a variety of housing, along with low-rise commercial and mixed-use development. T. 4 neighborhood center is applied at that kind of neighborhood gateway, right near Bryley, and allows for mixed-use residential and commercial uses. So approximately half, about twenty-eight acres of the Study Area One, the larger swath, is currently zoned commercial or industrial, but is largely limited to T. 4 neighborhood-evolving and T. 4 neighborhood maintenance policies, which again permit residential use. The plan amendment would allow for neighborhood-scale restaurants and retail in these areas and further build upon a mix of uses. This plan amendment enables a neighborhood-scale mixed-use district that creates a complete community by supporting different housing typologies, as well as neighborhood amenities such as retail, restaurants, and services. Complete communities are a central theme throughout our guiding document, Nashville So Charlotte Park, not to be confused with the neighborhood, the actual park. Charlotte Park serves as the only major public amenity for the Robertson and Charlotte Park neighborhoods, and this policy change encourages mixed-use development adjacent to and around the park, such as restaurants and additional housing, which could increase the number of people in the area and users of the park and further activates this metro So Robertson Avenue is categorized by the Major and Collector Street Plan as a Collector Avenue, but it is not currently prioritized for pedestrian or street calming improvements under the 2022 Walk and Bike Plan. However, this policy change could result in increased residential and commercial growth that would justify public street improvements, and it makes private-sector-led projects that include sidewalks more likely to occur. So in summary, applying T. 4 MU and T. 4 NC policies, as well as the supplemental policy, help expand neighborhood-scale mixed-use opportunities, fosters complete community, enables existing commercial and industrial properties to become mixed-use development that better serve the neighborhood, activates Charlotte Park, and supports public and private infrastructure. Staff recommends approval of this policy amendment and supplemental policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, but we are the applicant. But we're the applicant, so is that right? So...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open it up for the public hearing, and if there is anyone here speaking in support, please come forward. We have a slightly different setup, so you'll need to sit at the chair over there by the Following our normal procedures, you'll have two minutes to speak, and please start with your name and address. Yep, you're good.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ben Passno. I currently live on 5710 Maxson Avenue. Until recently, I lived in District 18, or Hillsborough Village, until COVID, and was priced out of that neighborhood. My rent, from initially to now, has more than doubled, and that's one of the reasons I support this policy change. Many of you know me. I recommend this work of our outgoing councilmember, the neighbors, and this multi-year effort to bring Charlotte Park closer in line with our peer neighborhoods within the UZO, opening the door to additional uses and diversities in price points, which I hope will not only broaden the amenities in our neighborhood beyond the Marina and a Harry Potter-themed bakery, but also a diversity in residents. This policy is a step towards easing housing costs by making it easier to build more housing, and is a step towards traffic reduction in terms of increasing neighborhood amenities like possibly childcare and lowering VMT. There was a survey that we did in March of last year with 160 residents. Of those, the majority said that they favored a Sylvan Park-like policy, which would be kind of pockets of zoning. So thank you, planning, for listening to moving away from a 51st-style corridor and more towards pockets interspersed with single-family zoning. And before the last neighborhood meeting, I was able to talk to nine people in the park, and all nine were in favor, ten if you count the baby. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you're on.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this. My wife and I are more than five-year residents on East Borough in Charlotte Park.
Sir, could you just state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Eric Deems. Thank you for that, Todd. Appreciate that.
And address.
Yeah, East Borough Drive, next to Charlotte Park. My wife and I have lived there over five years. We travel Robertson daily, multiple times a day. We are in full support of this, and honestly, we don't think it goes far enough, literally. We believe the entirety of Robertson Avenue, from Rock Harbor to the now-defunct church at the corner of Lozier and Robertson, should be included in the land use policy change. We just think that's smart planning. I don't think neighbors or folks in this room, anybody, should pick winners and losers based on certain lines of where your property is. Your property is worth X, but because you're on the other side of this line, it's worth four X because of what the land use policy will enable whenever you're on the exact same street or across the street. So good planning encourages density on corridors. It streamlines base zoning to match on both sides. You all know this, you're good stewards of the city. Today, there are very limited options in our neighborhood, and we're feeling the effects of that, and that's because there's a lack of density. More density would allow us to have the commercial and retail that we desire and would allow us to activate Charlotte Park, which is a true gem in West Nashville that is underutilized. So thank you. I would like to encourage, again, on behalf of my wife and I, positive streamlined stewardship as our neighborhood grows, and we're open to bringing the density and improving Robertson and the traffic implications that'll be there, and we understand that this is not changing the zoning, but the base policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Others speaking in support? Start with name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you for listening to me. I'm John Mummer, and I live at 6370 Ivy Street, Number Four. And first of all, I want to thank Olivia for coming to so many meetings and listening to the neighborhood concerns about this, and especially appreciate the fact that the original plan was changed to take a lot of our concerns into effect. I would admit the amendment's not perfect, but I think you're probably used to dealing with the imperfections of city government and the limitations of what the policy allows us to do. We would prefer to have some sort of policy that gives us exactly this developer or exactly that developer, and policy doesn't really let us do that, but that's the perfect place. This amendment takes us in the right direction, because what we have right now is not bringing us in the small businesses and the retailers that we would like to have there. So moving in this direction is the positive way to go to help us have the kind of community we want to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others speaking in support? Yeah. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Becky Warren. I live at 809 William Howard Court, and I bought a home in this neighborhood in November. I moved from East Nashville, and the main thing I was looking for in buying a house was walkability. And one of the reasons I chose this neighborhood was because of the Breeze Block, which had nothing in it at the point now. We have the Harry Potter bakery, but I was eager to move into a place that was looking to be more walkable with more amenities, and so I strongly support this plan. I really appreciate everything the city has done, coming to our neighborhood meetings, making the scope a bit smaller, so we have this sort of Sylvan Pike or Sylvan Park type of development, as my neighbor was describing, and also with the height limitation. So thank you for listening to us, and I support the plan.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
I'm Brittany Passno. I live at 5710 Maxson Avenue, and I've been, I fully support this policy change. I've lived in the neighborhood since 2015, and contrary to what a lot of people have stated they experienced, I've actually experienced a lot of positive benefits as the density has increased in the neighborhood. As the density has increased, I've experienced a greater sense of community and cohesiveness, and I've seen neighborhood involvement increase as the neighborhood has become more dense and those community connections have been fostered. I think this policy change has a lot of potential to bring amenities to the neighborhood that a wider swath of the neighborhood can enjoy, such as sidewalks, restaurants, increasing walkability, providing an option to not use a car to get to those amenities if we are able to pave the way, literally pave the way, for street improvements and sidewalks. And I look forward to seeing how all of this progresses, and I think it falls squarely in line with where the direction the city is headed and what the key pillars of Nashville Next are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Krista Schrafler. I reside, actually, outside this area at 712 Burley Court in the Bellevue area, but I own the property at 520 Snyder Avenue, which is adjacent to the Pluto on the far east side as compared to the major solar system in Study Area Two. And I very much support this. For a number of years, I rented the property at Snyder to my niece and her husband and their newborn baby, later small child, later toddler, and it is not, as it exists now, a walkable neighborhood. If you need a Band-Aid or diapers or soap to walk, you have to go on the Sky Bridge, across the interstate, over to the Kroger on Charlotte. And the Charlotte Park area is also quite a walk to the park itself. And so I think this is an excellent idea to have this smaller pocket area where the abandoned church is, to also give some amenities like coffee shops, maybe a small market, maybe the produce place we'll choose to franchise from Sylvan Park over there. So I think the Sylvan Park model is an excellent idea, and as an owner, but not a resident, but someone who has very close communication with someone who was a resident there for quite a while, I think this is an excellent proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others speaking in support?
Good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon. Caitlin Jones. I'm at 530 American Road in the Charlotte Park neighborhood, greater neighborhood, and I am in full support of this project proposal, and I'd want to, again, thank Olivia for all the work she did coming to our community meetings, and also just thank our community itself. As you can see, we're pretty active in showing up for things that are important to us. And so just a couple key points. I think that in the process of this, you saw how long the process was. You saw the first meeting date back in 2022. I kind of came in, I moved into the neighborhood from the Nations, kind of in, you know, in the middle of that, so I was not there at the first meetings, but have since become very involved. And I think in that process, the neighborhood, at least it seems to me, my understanding, is, you know, we do want these amenities and things, but there is concern on too much density and too many things. But I think that that in and of itself is a process of the zoning process, and when things come through, you know, making sure that they fit the neighborhood when they're looking for a rezone. I think this policy overall needs to happen, because as you can see, we have, there was another map up there. If you see the SP map, it's just pockets of SPs. And, you know, I was told by a good friend in planning that, you know, when you have that many SPs, that means the policy isn't working for the neighborhood. So that is what I believe. I'm really looking forward to having some more things in the neighborhood, including some, I'm sure you'll hear various concerns of traffic in the next group that are going to come up. And I'm not saying that isn't a concern, but I think that this policy will pave the way for things to even improve more, hopefully, as things occur. So thank you all for your service to our community, and that's all.
Thank you. Others speaking in support? Okay. If not, are there people speaking in opposition? Okay. You got, no, come forward, you can all come forward. You'll, same thing, two minutes, and please start with your name and address.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Art Merksberry. I live at 6412 B. Edsel Drive. I am also the president of our Neighborhood Association, just elected recently. Still have that new car smell. We had a vote last Thursday concerning the policy change. We went 3320 against the policy. Charlotte Park, if you've spent much time back there, I'm a real estate agent. I door-knock the neighborhood thoroughly, three or four times now. It is an older generation generally, and they enjoy their neighborhood the way it is. My wife and I lived in the Nations for six years, and I couldn't wait to get out of there. It's so cramped and so packed, you can't even run on the streets because the cars are just lined up on the streets. One of the things I wanted to make a point when I decided to take on this role is I don't want to see what happened in Charlotte Park what happened to the Nations. We understand change is inevitable, growth is good, but we need to make sure that we're not adding an enormous amount of people in a very small area on a two-lane road that doesn't even have sidewalks all the way down it. So we are voting against the policy change. I sure appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Chuck Smith, and I live at 6207 Robertson Avenue. I have been a member of the CRNA for seven years, and I'm also the chairman of the Development Committee for the CRNA. In your description of the policy change, it states the design has enhanced and created an urban mixed-use, commercial, institutional, and light industrial environment. The current makeup of our neighborhood is already all of those things. The demographics of the Robertson Avenue corridor today is 759,000 square feet of commercial property, 17.5 acres, 200,000 square feet, four and a half acres of industrial property, a million square feet of 23 acres of high-density housing, R. 15 or greater. There are five active churches in our area totaling 275,000 square feet or seven acres. This seems pretty diverse to me. The growth in our neighborhood has been extensive lately. This is because the infill has added 600 homes, 300 of them which didn't exist prior to the infill. Higher-density SPs have added another 451 residents. There are 255 additional residents approved. If you look at the numbers from an owner's numbers standpoint, just these items alone have added 1,000 residents to our area and at least another 2,000 people. This represents a population change in our area of 20%. The proposed policy change takes in 3.2 million square feet or 75 acres. Based on the density allowance under the policy, which is a maximum of R. 40, the new policy would potentially add an additional 3,000 residents and 6,000 people, which translates into a population increase of 60%. Granted, there are some inefficiencies in the building of the residence, but you may see that these numbers are large. Our association has done a pretty good job of finding middle ground with the developers. We have worked with the developers over 17 different SPs that have totaled 700 new residents. We understand that Nashville is growing and needs more density. We have been able to navigate this thus far without a major impact to our neighborhood. We have been able to navigate this thus far without a major impact to our neighborhood. Okay. Need another minute.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Others speaking in opposition?
Hi. My name is Wes O'Quinn, and I'm one of and represent the owners of Rock Harbor Marina, 525 Basswood Avenue, 6615 Robertson Avenue. Thank you for your work so far. Rock Harbor has acted as a community gathering place since its opening as a marina over 50 years ago. We're currently home to one of the premier boat storage and service facilities in the state, Blue Moon Waterfront Grill, Metro Police Department, TWRA Fire Department, and Special Operations, so most of the first responders, Boat Run on Nashville, Nautical Boat Club, the list goes on. We hope to expand our offerings and create additional amenities for both the immediate neighborhood as well as the city of Nashville and beyond. This plan, as it's proposed, does not appropriately address the desires of the community, especially in its exclusion of Rock Harbor. After reviewing, I was surprised that the staff report doesn't reference Rock Harbor or the support of the community and residents of the neighborhood for its inclusion in this policy change. I regularly attend most community meetings and have heard the community's desire to create several clusters of commercial activity along Robertson Road, including Rock Harbor, which has been mentioned specifically even today on a number of occasions, acting as one of those nodes. I'm also aware of at least a dozen direct requests of planning in the city councilwoman via email or phone to include Rock Harbor in this plan. Based on the feedback that the community has received from the councilwoman and the planning department regarding the intent of this policy change, a change in the policy on our property seems to be an obvious one. First, it meets the desire of the community to create an anchor cluster of mixed-use activity along Robertson. It would provide a more consistent and cohesive zoning policy for us, which would allow further activation of a major neighborhood amenity by creating a greater mix of uses. It enables an existing commercial or industrial zone property to become a walkable mixed-use development, fostering a much more complete community. All of these things are documented goals of the plan that also clearly meet the collective goals of Rock Harbor and the neighborhood. I want to go on the record to state that, as it sits, I do not believe that this plan fully addresses the needs and wants of the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for your work here. My name is Ken Villar, and I live and own 627 East Borough Drive in Charlotte Park. Our neighborhood is a beautiful neighborhood with a vibrant and diverse community and mainly single-family residential housing. This neighborhood has been experiencing rapid but organic growth. While change can be good, change must be measured. It must be rational. It must be tailored. Otherwise, change can have negative impacts to that way the benefits. In this case, while I'm happy to support the business community, I am opposed to the proposed plan as currently drafted, in part because it includes residential lots which would negatively affect families within and near the area affected by the proposed plan. Instead of creating cohesion as purported, this would actually create a lack of cohesion by allowing commercial and high-density projects right next to, behind, and across from historically and current residential lots. This would push on our neighbors who expected the area to maintain the same family-friendly character that has been in effect for decades. In approving this proposed plan, the planning commission would be effectively picking winners and losers, with the winners being the developers and private equity firms who took a gamble when they bought their properties and lobbied for change, in hopes that the city of Nashville would help them make a profit at the expense of our community and the future of the neighborhood. This proposed plan would be an injustice for the affected residents and property owners and would result in the violation of their rights to the quiet enjoyment of their properties. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is Elaine Korn. I live at 607A James Avenue, 200 feet from Robertson. I have three issues with the proposal. One, it's to allow mixed-use development on currently zoned CS and IR properties. Under the current plan, there have been projects that utilize the SP with a plan amendment and concurrent rezoning with community support, such as mixed-use Breeze Block at 6100 Robertson and Arcade at 677 Vernon. These developments point to the fact that there is an effective process in place that does allow this type of development. Our eight properties are afforded the same avenue, and to date, owners have grouped their properties to sell as a block, resulting in rezones for higher density. Two, it envisions Robertson similar to 51st in the Nations or 12th South. These roads are arterial with additional lanes and intermittent parking, whereas Robertson is only a collector avenue with no room for change. 60 new homes have been built on lots of budding Robertson, 15 at site prep, recent rezoned for 15. 51st and 12th have no new homes, are primarily commercial, no mixed-use on 51st, and little on 12th. White Bridge is the main access to Robertson. Robertson is a dead end, and only other access is through perpendicular neighborhood streets. Three, Duluth is a cul-de-sac with access only from Robertson. The plan states that cul-de-sacs are not appropriate for T4MU. The only T4MU in our neighborhood was done by SP. The only in surrounding communities is around Centennial, Charlotte Pike, and I-40, no comparison to our streets. This change allows, this change allows an easier route to greater density projects out of scale to the neighborhood with no guarantee of mixed-use or supporting infrastructure. Buzzwords aside, the real world is the January Duluth application to planning for 300 units on 3 1/4 acres, no mixed-use, no road improvements citing this imminent change as planned compliance. Nashville Next assigned our neighborhood the correct plan designations. I urge you to disapprove.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Daniel Pickney. I live on Leslie Avenue, which is about a block from the proposed area. I am against it in this form just because it is 60 acres of land. It's a proposed neighborhood center, but it touches our northern boundary, which is 60 acres is quite large, obviously. When I was the Neighborhood Association's treasurer, we took a poll, and we asked, "What neighborhood would you most like to be like in the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years?" And the overwhelming response was Sylvan Park, where I happened to grow up. So my parents have been very involved in Neighborhood Association there. I've been to neighborhood meetings there since I was like five or six. But the big takeaway there was, they never, in my knowledge, have never actually converted anything that was residential to commercial. They have, however, converted commercial to residential in one case I know of, and then all the restaurants, like Answer, that was a grocery store when I was a kid, for example. So I just feel like if we want to be like Sylvan Park, if that's what the neighbors really want, this would be a big step in the wrong direction. And then there's a few small things in the proposal I wanted to just specifically address, like, I think at one point, the direct quote, "Property owners cannot request a rezoning for a mix of uses under the current policy." And I know zoning and planning are different, but that did happen, I think, Vernon and Robertson, there's a mixed-use property that was commercial, that did get rezoned inside the proposed boundaries where they are now. And that happened, I think, in 2017, and that was actually residential before that, R8. So the first meeting we had for this was in November of 2022, a little over six months ago. We've had a whole lot of thoughts, and we did take a vote with the Neighborhood Association. It was almost 50-50. It was more against than for, but we are nowhere near a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hi. Caitlin. Thank you for all you do. I am Sarah Stewart, and I have lived on Basswood Avenue, 600 Basswood Avenue, for 29 years. I am the Beautification and Environmental Commissioner for District 20. And in the amendment, if it's passed, it's an easier path to rezoning. If an owner chooses to rezone for significant density under MUN or MUL, the argument will be it complies with the plan as set out in Nashville Next. There is no guarantee of retail or traffic improvements. We already have a traffic issue, as evidenced in the inclusion of Robertson in Metro's pilot safety program, and two neighborhood streets awaiting traffic calming. They're in the program right now, and we're working on them. Per Metro PD, there have been 33 crashes in the neighborhood in the past 12 months, most on Robertson. The community suggested a neighborhood center at the beginning, defunct church, and at the end at Rock Harbor Marina, the middle of Robertson, but this was not pursued by planning. We wanted a much smaller area in the center and beginning and end. The proposal suggests that we are not cohesive, complete neighborhood, and I disagree. Adding retail and density does not make a neighborhood. While not walkable, there is significant retail close by on Centennial and Charlotte Park or Pike. Have you guys ever been to Nashville West? That is a whole sidewalk down, okay? So this is not going to activate Charlotte Park. Only the ballpark players are allowed to use the restrooms in Charlotte Park, okay? In the park. Only the ballparks can use it. And that building is kept locked when they're not there. Allowing residents to use these facilities, along with unchaining and repairing the tennis courts and providing shelter over the picnic tables, might actually be more beneficial to us as a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm not going to be so technical. My name is Julie Smith. I live at 6207 Robertson Avenue. I've lived in that house for 38 years, raised four kids, and I have grandchildren now growing up two doors down. I'm a native Nashvilleian, grew up a mile and a half away from this place. So I'm totally against this. And my reasons are that it was brought to us that we were supposed to be like 51st or 12th Avenue South, or for heaven's sakes, Hillsborough Village. Okay, I'm sorry. Again, these places are not Robertson Road. We are on a two-lane road that dead ends. Let's see where I can get to. The traffic is already heavy without adding more density. We have beautiful homes there and more that have been built. If you were me, would you want a four-story building or apartment complex or multi condos next to your house where you're raising your family? Or a mixed-use building? And they keep saying that they're going to put, you know, restaurants or whatever in there. You don't know what's going to go in these buildings until you get a signed document. So again, I'm against it. I don't want to check into cash across the street from my house. I can't deal with this. So we have a park that my children played ball at, and we had gatherings there on a regular basis. Metro Parks took away our water fountains over seven years ago. They do not keep it clean. They do not keep it cut. They tore down the Bavien. We asked if we could have one built, when a porch company was going to build it for us. We were told by Metro Parks, we couldn't do that because now it has to be built out of steel. So while McCabe and West Park are still getting these amenities, we have been denied these. They want to make this park usable? Make it usable. This is not a usable thing. Why can we activate something that can't be done? Anyway, I'm against this. I appreciate your time and all you do for us, and thank you.
Thank you. You guys are tricking me. Keep lining up that way. I can't tell where you're coming from.
I'm Tim Moore. I live on Lovell Avenue. I've been there about eight years and raised a family. I got married there, and I initially wanted to live in Sylvan Park, couldn't afford it, and my very bright real estate agent said, "You should go look at the Robertson Charlotte Park area." So moved over there with hopes that maybe we would get something like Sylvan Park. I was very excited when this policy change was proposed. Spent a lot of time talking with Councilwoman Roberts and Adam, previous president, and when the 51st concept came up, everybody was hard against it. Like, a lot of people spoke about it. I believe the vote was, "Do you want something more like Sylvan Park, or do you want something more like the Nations?" And everybody said something more like Sylvan Park. This is not like Sylvan Park, and as much as I really, even up to a couple weeks ago, wanted to vote yes for this, I'm still just struggling on having this much density. We're already backed up 25% down Robertson Road and Rush Hour, where everything's going to change to R8. So that's going to get worse regardless, which is understandable. So I mean, I feel like if we had a little bit more density for multifamily, that people could stomach it, and this policy would be very good for the neighborhood. I really love how it connects the park. There's a lot of things that we talked about, about getting more people to Charlotte Park so it's safer, and we can turn the water fountains on and have the bathrooms there, and people are around more. It's how you take care of your things. But this is, to me, this is just kind of a trade-off of, we'll give you some stuff over here if we can put a bunch of density off in the back off Duluth. And as other people have referenced, as soon as that first proposal came through, that's what everybody's fears were about. So there's a lot of, I think there's probably three big groups here. There's people that are hard against a lot of change in the neighborhood. It's been that way for eight years. Some of that's not going to change, and I understand. There's a lot of people that want everything to change and to be like the Nations. And then there's a lot of people in the middle that want something that's reasonable, and they're very close. Some of the people that I've talked to are very close to wanting this to work, but are just against the traffic side of it.
Thank you. Others speaking in opposition? Anybody else back there? Okay. Well, if not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. The council lady is not here, but Lisa, have we, I think we did receive a letter from her?
Hi. Yes, that's, yes, that's correct. Councilmember Roberts is out of town and so could not be here, but she did send a letter to you all that was forwarded along indicating, first of all, thanking Olivia and the planning department for their hard work, and then indicating her support for the plan amendment, indicating that it allows for expansion of mixed-use opportunities, integrates housing within walking distance of mixed-use development in alignment with Nashville Next, and enables existing commercial industrial properties to become more walkable mixed-use, activates Charlotte Park, and supports public and private investment along Robertson Avenues. So yes, you have her whole letter, which is a couple of pages long. I just hit some of the high points, but she did indicate her support.
Great. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, I'm going to mix up our normal process a little bit here. Commissioner Henley, would you like to start us off?
I will. Thank you, Chair. So there were a couple things that I heard, that I made notes of during the presentation as well as when we had members of the community speak. And I may ask for just a little bit more clarification on this, because I had the same knee-jerk response, which was, you know, we didn't necessarily limit the study area, we just limited the boundaries in which we were proposing policy changes. They kind of moved away from the corridor, and we kind of have the new configuration. I just, I do want to make sure that I understand that correctly, because it wasn't a change in the overall study area, it was just a change in the proposed amendment.
Yeah, so let me show you.
The study area itself.
So this was the original proposal for mixed-use corridor, all within that kind of red line, so all along Robertson, and then mixed-use neighborhood for, within the brown line where Vernon and Duluth are. So that's what we originally presented to the neighborhood in November of 2022 and asked for feedback on, and then further refined that to our current proposal.
Okay. And the reason I ask is specifically because we're proposing additional density. You know, I know the thoroughfare itself is one that's not, it's never been one for a lot of, a lot of traffic flow. But when we're thinking about looking at bringing traffic and density to the center of that community, I think it's important we do think about the entirety of that thoroughfare, especially if we, as our mayor said, you know, we're thinking about how to work with transit. I think that it really does need to be integrated. And then also, if that study area did shrink, I did hear someone come and speak about the exclusion of Rock Harbor, which I thought, again, we have a community asking for just a greater sense of amenities, I think that's one that can definitely be called out that they have that a lot of other communities do not. And then I am understanding correctly, and I want to make sure that I say, you know, I heard a lot of the comments about the park and the activation of the park and the extension down to Deal Street. I think that makes sense. I like that that is something that's being done. I think there's some heartburn about the park in its current state and how it should be done, and I think that's something I'll carry over to the Parks Board in my role there. But I do believe that that level of responsiveness and work to engage, it does make a lot of sense. I didn't see a lot of language in here just from the staff report, and so maybe there's like one or two soundbites about infrastructure needs and infrastructure guidance that may be part of this. I think that's going to be something that would be helpful and probably would maybe ease some of... ease some of the concerns that we heard today.
Yeah, and can I just respond to a couple of things there? So for excluding Rock Harbor, Rock Harbor was never included to begin with, and we're actually working with an applicant right now to look into changing Rock Harbor. The exclusion of Rock Harbor was because it's in that district impact area. It's directly across from the quarry, and we've heard a lot of complaints about the quarry, the dust, the seismic activity. And so we wanted to address that separately because of its close proximity to those industrial uses. And then for your second point about infrastructure, during this amendment process, I spoke at length with NDOT about our opportunities here. And something that they wanted to emphasize is, or what I would like to, or we would like to emphasize here is, you know, Robertson is not prioritized. It is more low-density residential. And so with the current state that it's at, it's not prioritized in our documents. More private development, multifamily, additional density could help that receive greater prioritization. But that's kind of where we are in terms of infrastructure because I was trying to see if we could pair this with some infrastructure promises, and we can't do so at this time.
Okay, well, Olivia, that was the perfect answer to my question. I knew it was considered, but it was, again, why it wasn't materially here. You know, I want to hear my other, my fellow commissioners. I do think that, and we've heard this before, that there is an interesting dynamic between the value and the utilization of an SP and what that means and how it's valued in different communities based on how they see that going forward. So I do think those are something, those are conversation points maybe for us as commissioners to take a little bit further because it is something I hear a lot, especially when you have a community that's getting some fairly sizable SP requests and a lot of times want to have the type of influence that comes with an SP.
Commissioner Clifton.
I have to say, I've heard a lot of presentations for many years, and this one was particularly interesting from both sides. A lot of really detailed thought that I just had not thought about as I read over this at first on both sides. And I am having a lot of mixed feelings about it. I honestly think it has been a unique part of Nashville, and it is not Sylvan Park. And there's questions about whether it should be and what that means. To me, it's a, and I also realize, and I know the audience does, that we're not rezoning anything today. We're simply making a preliminary decision that would make it easier to make rezoning happen, which I can see that the people who are worried about this don't see a major distinction there. And history shows that to be valid. So I am interested as this process goes on, which it's just beginning for us, not for you guys, and as we think about questions that will arise to us after today, thinking about a lot of things about something that's happening here with three days left in the council term and a new councilman member coming in who, you know, I don't think there's any necessarily division between the old and new councilmembers. I just know what I read, but, so I'm not trying to say that there'll be a sea change of difference when somebody comes in. I just don't know. But typically, a councilmember helps people understand changes like this, and I'm sure that current councilmembers tried to do that. However, it is a unique situation we're in with three days left in the council term. Again, I think some of this is fear of change that we all have. Some of it is fearing to be Hillsborough Village, which of course is God's country, so you should have known that. Somebody should have researched the commissioners. Anyway, I'm not prepared to vote on this today. I'd like to know what the incoming councilmember thinks and what kind of arguments he or she, I can't remember if it's a he or she, have about it. It's a he, isn't it? Okay. I'm really up on these things. So anyway, I'll listen, I will, what?
He's here.
Has he spoken?
I'm not, I'm speaking today.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd be glad to hear from him if and when he'd like to. I realize it's no requirement that you speak. No, you have a different role, and I get that. But I'm just thinking about this. I'm having a little trouble wrapping my arms around all of it, even though some of the people who have spoken for it seem to really be quite convinced and probably rightly so that some aspects of this will really help everybody, and I'm just not sure. So there you go. I may be sure by the time I've finished listening to everyone else.
Commissioner Marshall.
Yeah, Marshall, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for those comments. Got that kind of where I was with my rationing through this. But just want to be clear again, the original proposal that you showed was much larger and it was downsized to where it is now. Was that a result of the meetings with the different community people and that's what the wishes were?
Yes, so this was, again, the initial study area, so it covered kind of the entirety of Robertson and then parts of Duluth and Vernon. And in that initial meeting, November meeting, we had, where we issued over, I believe, 2,000 notices for folks. So that was our most heavily and representative meeting. We had folks that, we did comment cards, and comment cards indicated that folks were supportive of mixed-use development in this area. And what we heard was they wanted it to be a more targeted condensed area and had concerns about height. And so we continued to attend meetings. So we attended their January and March neighborhood meetings and made changes after each meeting. So for example, after the January meeting, we took off additional policy pieces and just focused on that one area with the gateway neighborhood center on Riley. And then by the, kind of the final presentation, we had offered a height restriction. So yes, we worked very hard to try to respond and balance the concerns of the community. But what we heard was an interest in having mixed-use development and an interest in the Sylvan Park model. And I will say that I think that this is, it's not exactly Sylvan Park because this neighborhood isn't exactly Sylvan Park. However, this policy is mixed-use neighborhood, which allows for a mix of single-family, multifamily, mixed-use, and commercial. So single-family even next to mixed-use, which is what we see in parts of Sylvan Park. And then it also activates Charlotte Park, which Murphy Road next to Sylvan Park is a mixed-use and commercial development that has really activated Sylvan Park. So those were how we interpreted and how we tried to satisfy those interests, so.
And this particular project also kind of aligns with the plan for Nashville Next and all of that.
Yes. So Nashville Next calls for complete communities where folks can walk and bike to meet their basic needs. And so increasing policy that allows for a mix of amenities to meet those needs is in alignment with the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie. All right, if you would like to.
Well, I'll say something.
Yeah.
Well, I've got to figure out how to push this thing.
Yeah, you got it right there.
Okay.
Perfect.
Well, I'm the newbie, but I understand from what I heard is that, excuse me, I'm a native Nashvillian, so I'm familiar with that area. I know it's an old area, a lot of old houses and things like that. So what I hear from opposition, which is what we normally feel as native Nashvillians, what will it look like in the future? You said it'll look like something, but will it look like that? And so I just want to say, I note and I understand that you want to keep things the way they are, what Nashville looks like. And there may be some fear or some concern about what it may look like in the future. And I just wanted to say, I know, I can hear you both sides of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Withers.
Thank you, Chair. There's a lot to think about here, and I'm very familiar with this area and also with, having served with Councilmember Roberts for two terms, know how carefully she looks at a lot of development proposals in her communities and generally benefits very greatly from having a lot of neighborhood discussions about development proposals. I guess perhaps Ms. Francine, I might just have a couple of questions for you, but I want to dig a little bit deeper into this "we like Sylvan Park" idea and kind of what that means. Sylvan Park, as I look at the community character manual map, is primarily neighborhood maintenance with the exception of a broader area, which is along Charlotte Pike itself. So that, I think, other than, as you mentioned, the other piece right at Murphy Road and 46, there might be a couple of other things here and there. But generally, for Sylvan Park, you have the one piece there at the roundabout at Murphy Road. And then a very large, or lengthy, I guess is a better term, area along Charlotte that borders Richland Park itself. And so how would you compare or contrast, I guess, based on that observation that I made? How would you compare or contrast what the revised staff recommendation is here with Sylvan Park? What are some similarities or differences that you would point out between this and Sylvan Park?
And so one thing I do want to show really fast, let me find this, is the current zoning. And so one key difference in this neighborhood is that you have legacy industrial and commercial zoning. I mean, Sylvan Park does have a tad on Murphy Road, but it doesn't have the history of industrial and commercial that this neighborhood has, which I would say is a key difference. And part of why we grabbed a larger area is because, as you'll see in the red and the purple on there, those are commercial and industrial uses. And currently, the policy applied to those properties is neighborhood evolving or neighborhood maintenance, which means they can't redevelop into a mixed-use opportunity.
Right.
So part of it, part of the key difference is just the, kind of looking at the existing zoning. And then I also think the, or we also think that one of the key advantages of mixed-use neighborhood is that you can have a single-family home next to a mixed-use and have these kind of nodes. It doesn't necessarily mean that the entirety will be mixed-use, just that it allows for a lot of different uses to exist, which I think is in alignment with how the neighborhood currently exists and just kind of furthers, promotes neighborhood-scale amenities. And then finally, one thing too that you mentioned is Sylvan Park, you know, it borders Charlotte Park. Well, you've used Richland and Charlotte. It's much more connected to Charlotte Park, or sorry, Charlotte Pike. And so there's kind of an access to amenities there that's easy to do. And that kind of access to Charlotte is not as walkable or as bikeable from the Charlotte Park and Robertson neighborhoods, especially that segment of Charlotte, which has seen a boom in mixed-use.
Right. And I guess one of the things that I'm kind of maybe agreeing that I would say that this actually is more like Sylvan Park than the Nations in that it does sort of seek to create, you know, sometimes in our historic neighborhoods, we used to have what we'd call 100% corner, where everything would be literally on the corner. That would be the only, we have a lot of that in Five Points, right? Like, but only that one corner than everything. But in terms of having a little bit of, you know, maybe a couple of blocks where you'd have a commercial district and especially having one that is aligned, in this case, along an actual park and maybe helps to activate the park. I guess I'm seeing that this plan and the revised staff recommendation, I kind of believe, is closer to a Sylvan Park model than probably what was initially proposed. This is my observation. But similarly, also kind of digging down into the granularity of differences between mixed-use policy areas. So could you talk us through as well some of the differences maybe between, I think the initial proposal was for a mixed-use corridor versus mixed-use neighborhood? And does mixed-use neighborhood, is it more supportive of housing in greater amounts, especially in lower density? Or how does the mixed-use corridor differ from what is proposed now, which is mixed-use neighborhood?
So mixed-use corridor is typically applied, as we know, along corridors, areas where you're seeing a lot of commercial business already and not necessarily in neighborhoods, although it is applied along 51st. It is applied in parts of North Nashville within neighborhoods. But it seeks a higher intensity than I think that the neighborhood wanted because it does allow up to an MUG rezone, which mixed-use neighborhood does not.
Right.
And I think that that is one of the key distinctions there. I also think that, or we also think that the mixed-use neighborhood policy has a heavier emphasis on residential, more so than mixed-use corridor.
Right, okay. That's kind of was my experience in working through those in East Nashville, but I appreciate your speaking to that. And like in East Nashville, we have mixed-use corridor along Main and Woodland, which is not only a collector in our tier, but a tier-one center. Right. And so that makes sense, but you don't have anything near that level of intensity that's proposed for Robertson. So that would maybe be a little bit intense, and this sounds a whole lot more housing-supported, which I do think is really important for our city to look at. I think the cap at four stories helps. It just, it helps to provide some guidance. If you did have an SP that came through, or let's say someone did have a large parcel they were wanting to do MUGA, you could still have that use palette or profile. You could still have that floor ratio, but it would still keep that height at four as opposed to going up to seven if you had a deeper parcel. Right?
Right. And one of the things, the way, sort of thinking about the intersection of policy and zoning, and Olivia and the Long Range Planning Team have sort of done this first piece of studying the policy. And if this were to pass, and then my team, Land Development, would be reviewing any zone change requests against the policy as it's requested. And one of the things to sort of keep in mind when we think about rezonings or appropriate zonings within a policy is that not every part of a mixed-use neighborhood policy is going to support the same zonings. It's really site and context-specific. And so things that are on the edge, like maybe adjacent to Riley Parkway, could support maybe more than something that is adjacent to a neighborhood maintenance area. And so we're always looking at not only what's the policy, but where is the property within the policy and what policies it's adjacent to. And so the implementation part of it, which is what my team does when we're reviewing zone change requests to make recommendations to you all, is to look at that nuance of the context within the broader policy.
And just to remind everyone, just because it never hurts to say too many times, but this is not a zone change proposal.
Right.
And that any future zone changes would still have to work through the future councilmember as well as come before the commission for a recommendation before going onto council. So all those would have a whole additional round of public engagement as well as professional review from our staff. So another.
That's right. And these, oh, plan amendments, sorry, plan amendments are planning commission decisions only, so this decision does not go forward to council.
Right.
So this is a, this is a you-only, and then zone changes would be a recommendation to council.
I do think that it's, I do think that it's, having kind of been on both sides of rezoning issues over my many years in Nashville, I think for myself as a councilmember, I kind of came to a position of thinking that it is, like you do want to have public engagement and even public hearings on a rezoning, but I think sometimes if you were to come through every single SP, you would have, under today, with the difference between industrial sometimes zoning and policy, if someone were to bring a mixed-use project today, they would have to bring an SP, and it would also require that the commission also approve a policy change, which I know we have sometimes struggled with on those kind of one-off requests. And so I do think that this makes more sense to say, where is mixed-use, particularly with a mixed-use policy that is a little bit heavier in emphasis on housing. I do think that that is a wise thing to do so that then it's not a complete level of brinksmanship every time someone does want to bring housing forward, whether or not it does have fronts for retail and things of that nature. it does have fronts for retail and things of that nature. So, I think that's a good idea. I do think the idea of activating the park is a good idea. I think we heard from neighbors that, it sounds like our Metro Parks Department with their struggle that they often have with staffing, you know, maybe potentially someday having restaurants or mixed uses across from the park that neighbors could use, I think a lot of times that does increase the number of people who actually use the park. So, I think that is a good future goal that would be expressed through a policy change such as this one. And then, in terms of traffic calming and sidewalks, I think one of the things that Councilmember Roberts really has spoken to a lot about the Nations and the way that it developed, is that a lot of that development happened. You did have a lot of 25-foot lot lines that were reestablished years ago. A lot of that development that happened in the Nations was by rezoning. A lot of that happened long before we had sidewalk legislation in place, which we then had in place and is now not in place, unfortunately, again. So, I'm wondering for, for any of the staff, but particularly for Ms. Milligan, how is the planning department today looking at applying zone changes and whether or not we can require sidewalks and other infrastructure improvements?
Sure. I'm going to look at Tara and tell, or Ms. Lyhdon, let her know that if I start to, if she feels like it's legal, she needs to step in, because I am not an attorney, that she can do so. But, yes, you're correct, and I think, as many of you all know, the sidewalk ordinance, which had been adopted into the zoning code, which required sidewalk construction with most new development, was voided essentially by a decision of an appeals court. And so, that part of the zoning code essentially no longer exists. Now, that does not mean that we cannot still get sidewalks. There is a constitutional, or a legal test, if you will, that is sort of, is referred to as the Nolan and Dolan test, and it essentially relates to nexus and proportionality. And so, we still can require sidewalks for developments, so long as there is a nexus between what is being built and the sidewalk required, and that the requirement is proportional to the development. So, for SPs, for instance, we are still, right now, today, ones that you passed include sidewalks. We are making sure that when we're requiring them, that there is a tie between the development and the sidewalk that's being proposed. In most cases, with upzonings, that is a relatively easy test, especially if you're going from vacant to something on the site. Or if you're going from something on the site that doesn't generate a lot of pedestrian traffic to something that does generate a lot of pedestrian traffic, then you can make that tie. And so, we can still require them with SPs. We can still require them with straight zone changes, as long as we are making that nexus. But we are also working on, you know, what other solutions we might have. Tara, did you want to add anything, or?
Beautifully done.
So, I guess, again, I mean, I'll go back to, like, you know, I really do wish that the sidewalk bill were there, because, you know, as communities are redeveloping rather quickly, even sometimes with single and two-family, had we had that legislation in place, maybe 2010-ish, we would have areas, including in the Nations, where there would be completely new sidewalks that were constructed, had that legislation been in place at the time that that development happened. With this neighborhood being a little bit of, like, the next neighborhood out from the Nations, I think that there is a lot of development that's going on. And so, having a cohesive vision about encouraging a little bit more housing density in a particular node, encouraging commercial mixed uses in that same node, based on what we just heard from Ms. Milligan, I believe that, notwithstanding the status of that legislation, it sounds like there are still a lot of tools in place that would mean that having this policy change in place would make it more likely to get the kinds of rezoning applications that this commission would want to see, that would provide more housing, some mixed uses, and maybe more infrastructure as a result of private development. And lastly, and I think this is lastly, but the number-one thing that people call councilmembers about is speeding cars. So, we are all very, very attuned to the traffic calming application process. I do see that there is a neighborhood traffic calming application that is, at least in the works, on James Avenue, on a portion of Annex Avenue, on Twin Street, right in this neighborhood. There are also applications that are on file for Robertson Avenue, that looks like Vernon, Alamo Place, Crowley Drive. So, there are a few applications where NDOT is already at work with the Neighborhood Association on some traffic calming measures in the neighborhood, which is good, and that there are additional applications that are on file that, I think, as Ms. Francine mentioned, when you do have an area that has a little bit more, that is more likely to generate pedestrian activity, that tends to help increase the score within which NDOT selects applications. So, I will agree with Councilmember Roberts' letter that having a policy in place in a cohesive area such as this that encourages a little bit more housing density, a little bit more opportunity for mixed uses, will tend to support the goals that we heard about wanting to have Metro justify traffic calming in this area as well. So, I appreciate the work of staff, and we do have a letter on file from Councilmember Roberts, which I think is very thoughtful. Wish she couldn't, she regrets that she couldn't be here today, but I know that if she were, she would be here speaking in favor, and I'm going to support my colleague today. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs.
So, I guess first, working kind of from the back end, because it's a policy change and because it is going to direct a lot of the decisions moving forward, I really do feel this is a good thing for it to be undefferred and for the new councilperson, because as things are happening, I'm looking at him, but I don't have to, but as things are happening, he is going to be kind of the steward of this as it goes forward. And I feel like his investment into getting back these groups to talk about through it is going to be helpful, as he will probably be shepherding the future SPs and zone changes and everything from now on. So, I do feel like this, you know, kind of starting from the back, a deferral would be best to get him engaged. Like I said, so that's kind of my punchline. But as I move to other, though, I've been in this seat for a long time, and I feel like this community is closer than they, than many are for this type of policy change, because the things that are a little off could be just a little bit changed. So, I do feel like it's, there's a lot more consensus, I feel like, than I've seen in other cases. So, I do feel like there could be a little bit more education that, you know, the councilperson and, you know, working with you two, that can help educate to kind of maybe bring this closer together. So that, you know, moving forward, it'll be a lot easier as you're navigating it. Now, I will say, the reason why I kind of say it backwards, I do feel like it's a good plan, and what I think is going to be cool about this neighborhood, you're going to get some, I feel like it's putting in place something that could be like Sylvan Park, but I'm going to say better, but better because it's not to, you know, speak differently about Sylvan Park, but just because of some of the neighborhood characteristics already in place, it's actually going to be, it could be some really cool little things that could happen from it, I believe. And especially, you know, these, like you've said, this is not a zone change, these are just, you know, settings and policies that will help it. But the little nodes, the little communities, getting it more walking, activating Charlotte Park, the things that are going to be talked, that are going to be put in place will actually help really, in many ways, I think this could be a neighborhood that will be, everybody's going to want to be like this neighborhood next, because of the potential of it. So, I do feel like this is a good plan. I mean, I would even still like that corridor, you know, I kind of see it maybe getting bigger. I know one of the persons who, from the Marina, talked about that. I could see it, you know, actually getting bigger, and maybe with a new councilperson and more education, talking through it, maybe it can be more of a concise, and action could get larger. So, I'm for it, but I also am more for a deferral until the next councilperson.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, a lot of my points have already been covered. I guess I'd just say, I'm generally supportive of the city's goals here, activation of the park, support for more complete community. And I think if you are, we are, I guess, approving quite a few SPs that kind of go against the policy, it is probably a good idea to look at what your policy is overall. Wouldn't mind also hearing from the new councilman when he feels prepared. Has there, am I correct in thinking that Study Area 2 seems significantly less controversial than Study Area 1?
Yes, you're correct in your thinking.
Has that been, are those two pretty tied together in status view?
So, I don't think they have to be tied together, but I do think what we're trying to put forward today is a mixed-use vision for this area, which is why they were included together. So, the larger property to the south on the Study Area 2, that is the old, like, Richland Baptist Church, that is now, has been closed for several years. And so, I think there is community support there, I think more unanimous community support for creating some sort of gateway into the neighborhood and potentially a mix of uses.
That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Greg doesn't normally, the chair doesn't normally speak, but I will, I guess, just to sort of echo what Commissioner Tibbs and Withers said, is that we have seen, you know, in the years that I've been on the commission, we've seen a lot of requests for SPs in this area, and very clearly remember cases where the community reaction was, we don't want to be the next Sylvan Park, I mean, next Sylvan Park, we don't want to be the next Nations, we need to put steps in place, so we're not doing all of these changes on a one-off basis. Because, you know, we have seen a lot of those sort of lot-by-lot, or a couple lots at a time. So, I applaud staff for being proactive and thinking about, you know, the vision for this neighborhood. I think a lot of neighborhoods haven't had the benefit of some of that forward-thinking, and that's when we also get a lot of problems, when we're trying to be reactive. So, you know, I understand the need, the possibility of a deferral. I also just think this is a, this does seem like a good plan, and it's been something in the works for a year, so, or almost a year.
Yeah, November 2022 is when our first meeting happened, so almost a year, a little less.
So, yes, so I feel like there's been a good, a good public process around this too. But I will entertain further discussion from the commissioners, or welcome a motion. Commissioner Clifton.
I don't have a lot more discussion, I just wanted to point out what most of us know, although they're new commissioners. It's true that, this is not a rezoning, we've made that very clear, and it was clear beforehand, I'm sure, to most people, that it's also true that if we do approve this, then when a rezoning comes before us, our first and pretty much only question as commissioners is going to be, was this consistent with the plan? And it will be, if we adopt it, and maybe we should, because it looks like it's been worked on a long time. It's just, don't anybody vote on this thinking, well, this is just one decision. We're essentially deciding to approve anything in the future that can be fit into the conditions here. So, and I really do think there's a lot of good things about it. I just, I'm just not quite prepared yet, and I wish we could defer it. And I don't blame the incoming councilmember for not making a decision on this, you know, he knows what you and I did when we first started, which is not a lot, you know? He needs to be listening instead of charging ahead. I'm just, I'm just a little, I'm a little reticent to vote for this right now.
I think getting a sense kind of from the commission that there's, you know, some general support possibly for some of the, for some of the area possibly, but also some consternation and really hearing the feedback from some of the community members tonight. I would recommend to you all that if you consider a deferral to September 28th, could allow planning staff to take the feedback that we all heard from you all tonight, as well as from the community, to see if there's any other middle area, or to see if we've missed anything with any of our prior conversations over the past few months with the community. So, just want to offer that to you all as an option.
If we were to be a two-meeting deferral, would it actually be the meeting after the 28th? Would that be better?
I think that, I'm not sure if there's any other planned community meetings or anything like that necessarily, but that would be, I guess, October, the second week?
11th.
Is it the 14th?
11th.
11th? I don't have any issue with that. I think if that gives us some additional time, I just want to make sure that we have a meeting indeed scheduled for that date.
Sorry, I wanted to ask Olivia, who has been so gracious and patient and attended a lot of meetings, how much time she might need to be able to facilitate any additional conversations that might need to take place, and then also complete staff report and make any updates. And she's letting me know that the second meeting in October would be better from a staff-taming perspective.
Great. Okay. I'll make a motion to defer until the second meeting in October.
Any further discussion, or I guess any other specific direction to staff? Yeah?
So, I do think it's always important that we give our staff the appropriate time to take the needed actions. I also think it's really important that we give guidance. I know that's something that has been a very material impact that we aim to do. And, you know, I don't know if we've given them very clear guidance. It sounds like it's, well, yeah, new councilmembers, so let them figure it out. But I do think as a body, we've expressed some of our feelings, but I don't know if we've given, like, direct guidance. So, I do think we should do that. I'm actually in support of the motion, but I would, I would think that would be a material addition to the conversation.
Yes, Councilman Withers.
Thank you, Chair. Not that I'm advocating for a deferral, but I'm just wondering if the commission were to do a deferral, since there is a special policy that was applied that restricts height, would there perhaps also be a capacity to explore adding a mobility plan of some sort by that time in October?
I think that that's probably a much more extensive process. I would say that most of the time, when we have sort of specific mobility plans, thinking about sort of the Haynes Trinity area, it's an area where you sort of don't have streets at all. So, thinking about sort of that area north of Trinity where the Haynes Trinity Plan was, that's where we're building out whole new neighborhoods. There aren't streets, there's not a block pattern. And so, I think this is probably just a little bit different, just because we do have sort of the streets and the existing block pattern that a mobility plan might address. I think that we, if it's a question of sort of, like, sidewalks, or the include, is that what you're trying to get at?
Well, that's part of it, but we do have, in this area, there are, I mean, there are some pretty large parcels, for instance, and particularly ones that are off Robertson. Once you go back in there, there are some pretty large parcels. And so, that's what I'm kind of wondering if there might be some of those sites where a neighbor referenced Duluth, and yes, it is true that typically you would not want to have subdivisions that include cul-de-sacs in a T4 neighborhood. However, that street also, you know, dead ends to, you know, there's not a possibility of continuing that street. So, for some of those streets, if you- those streets, if you were to have, under present right of way, if you were to have a lot of intensity developed, for instance, everything would be going up and up that street and then turning around on a cul-de-sac. And is that effective? I mean, there are, I think, some areas where maybe, not that I'm recommending anything specific, but just thinking about how it might be possible to sort of, in working with the community, as well as with NDOT, map out what are some additional, not only vehicular, but especially pedestrian pathways to get through some of those sites to make sure that there's good walkability when future rezonings are brought. One of my other things about it as well is that there presently is not really bus service in this area. And so I think right now, all the, all traffic in that area is going to be vehicular. And so that is another thing for me where, you know, some neighborhoods that do have at least existing bus service, you can say, well, we're going to place density along the bus line where there's a bus stop. And then there's something like that that makes sense. But in this area, since there's not really that sort of service in the interior, just having some sort of a strategy sketched out maybe with NDOT might, might make sense to give some degree of a strategy for the neighbors about what that future development might, how it might develop in a way that does facilitate pedestrian access in particular.
So I think that we can maybe have a conversation with WIGO and look at where their existing routes. And I know that in Sylvan Park, they included sort of like a connector service that gets you from some of the commercial areas that don't have direct WIGO service to a WIGO route. And so I think that we can maybe have those conversations with WIGO. That's a pretty easy conversation. I will say that my team, when we're looking at rezoning requests within policy areas such as mixed use neighborhood or neighborhood evolving or those sorts of things, we're always looking at where there might need to be a new connection, even absent sort of a mobility plan telling us there should be a connection here. We're generally starting our conversations with that as the basis, should we be talking about public infrastructure, before we even talk about building placement or those sorts of things. And so I don't know that we necessarily need a specific mobility plan to sort of direct us down that path, because we're doing that anyway, especially for the policy areas that call for increased connectivity. Took a minute to get that word.
Can I add one thing, Lisa?
Yes.
Yes. So we did have, and this is over a year ago, so I'm trying to remember this conversation exactly, but I did talk to WIGO, because you're exactly right, there is a lack of bus service here. I think part of the challenge is just how the neighborhood streets were laid out with James Avenue. I think also part of it is because of lack of demand and a lower density. So those were the two challenges. But I think that they were piloting or interested in piloting. And again, I may be wrong, I'm trying to remember a conversation from a year ago, but a service where they have tried in some other communities to essentially like call a rider to get you to a route, as Lisa was saying.
We have it.
You have it. Okay, good. Just wanted to check. All right. So.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We're still in discussion. And I do think that Commissioner Henley had some, a good point. So Councilman Withers has provided one suggestion. Any other suggestions for staff in working on this deferral?
So I do think, again, as it was my suggestion, my particular focus was going to be on infrastructure needs and guidance. I think, I think Councilmember Withers addressed that appropriately. I also, I think I heard a lot of conversation, particularly about just appropriateness of use. And I know, again, we do have, and Lisa did a fantastic job of explaining that, but I do think it may be worth focusing on the level of engagement, particularly around that kind of secondary tier, right? I mean, a lot of times when we engage the communities, the product they see is exactly what's on the screen, which is an aerial map, and this area is being, the policy is being changed. But I do think supplemental policy and some of that language, I do think that's an important focus. I would, I would encourage that. I mean, I don't, again, nothing's going to be perfect. I don't think we should let perfect be the enemy of good. And I think this is actually really good in enabling the desires that I think we heard pretty unanimously. I would, I would think that would be the area of focus. It empowers the residents in terms of their stewardship, and we talked about that. And the mayor kicked us off this afternoon with how important our role is in guiding these things. And so I think that that would be my, my recommendation is to say, hey, let's make sure our conversations do dive a little bit deeper into, into some of that supplemental policy and kind of what that enables for, for this community.
On the motion to defer, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item is deferred until October 28th? Is that what we decided? October 26th, okay. All right. Well, that concludes our agenda or open items. We are now on to other business, and our representative of the Historic Committee is not here, so our friend of the Parks Committee, any updates from you?
Just want to highlight that a great opportunity for the 440 Greenway to be expanded. They had, there was open house on the 22nd, really focusing on the connection between Sevier Park and Browns Creek Park. So I think that's great. I will highlight this. I don't think any of us, if we're going to have a quorum, will be in attendance if we have a meeting on September 28th. But the annual dinner by the bridge supporting our Greenways Division is happening on that day. And then again, I just wanted to say, you know, again, the mayor, he mentioned a stronger and more formal connection with the NDOT, and really focusing on transit. I'm excited for the strides being made in the collaboration with Parks Department. And strides there, again, I think it's important that we utilize all of our efforts, our collective efforts, to just improve our public realm. A lot of times, probably 98% of the time, when we have issues or some consternation, it's usually because the public realm has been failing the neighborhoods. And so I think any strides we make there will just be an overall greater impact for our community. So just, just excited about that. And again, I did make some notes, I know, I know the room's kind of cleared out, but some notes about Charlotte Park. And I think there's, there's two ways to approach it. It's the kind of building and they will come, or really just show that the park is there for you and you are welcome to it, and allow the community to feel welcome. So I think some of the things I heard, hopefully we can find ways to target and address some of those things.
That is great. Next item is the Executive Committee report, and I don't think we have any, except that we do have a work session coming up before the next meeting.
That's September 19th. That's a Tuesday at 2:00 PM. And we'll be at our offices at 800 President Ron Reagan Way on the second floor in the Davidson Room. So we have some construction going on with some of our conference rooms right now. But, so we will be in the Davidson Room on the second floor of that building. And that's to, as a follow-up to the mayor's point about this new real estate planning program, we'll be giving a presentation pertaining to that program and kind of some of our ideas about how we might build that out over the next few months.
Great. Looking forward to that. We have the Director's Report. And then last but not least, any legislative, nothing? Nothing from that last meeting?
At the last commission meeting, we did have some discussion about the downtown historic overlay expansion. And just wanted to share that Councilmember O'Connell did bring an amendment on Third where you removed some parcels from that expansion. Included a lot of parcels, but did remove some parcels. And so those discussions can continue, but just wanted to report that back to the commission. So thank you for your support for moving it forward.
All right. Well, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right. I'll see you all on the 28th of September.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.